Ben in and then we can get to that.
Here comes Ben. I'm sorry, I did just push that live button so everyone is aware we are about to be live. But we will make Ben a co-host here. Sure, you're going to ask people to unmute. Yes, am I correct in thinking that?
Um, I can do that, yes.
That would be fantastic if you could do that for me. And I'm going to let everybody in. Are you ready, Ms. Burbine?
I am ready.
Excellent. Just watch your screen. If you see them, they will all come in right now.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. All right, people. Thank you for being here for Thursday, February 25th, 2021, for the Situate Planning Board. Those of you that wish to participate, we are doing this via Zoom. So go to our website and you can follow the prompts and what have you and join us. All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
Ms. Lampert?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you. Okay, we have a public hearing for proposed changes to the fee schedule for Situate Planning Board. Okay. All right, notice is hereby given pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 41, Section 81-Q, that a public hearing will be held by the Situate Planning Board on Thursday, February 25th, 2021, at 8:30 PM via remote access to consider amendments to the Situate Planning Board fee schedule. The current fee schedule and the complete text of the proposed changes to the fee schedule are available for inspection during the normal hours of business of the Situate Town Hall at the offices of the Town Clerk and the Planning Board at Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate, Massachusetts, and on the Town of Situate website, on the Planning Board webpage under proposed schedule, fee schedule changes. Any person wishing to comment on these proposed zoning amendments should appear via remote access due to COVID-19 protocols at the public hearing at the time and date designated above. Written comments on the fee schedule changes will also be accepted by the Planning Board prior to the public hearing. The Planning Board office is available 781-545-8730 for further information. Okay. Karen, do you want me to go through the current schedule and how it's going to change or how do you want this handled?
If you want to do that, that's fine. I mean, we can just start off by saying that the current fee schedule was adopted in 2003. And so it's nearly 18 years later and there has not been any change in the fees for that long. So it's about time that we raise the fees to keep up with the amount of work that it takes to actually produce, to issue decisions, et cetera. This is not including the peer review that's often required for a project.
Okay.
We based the fees on, we did some surveys of surrounding towns and that's how we based our fees.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll just quickly go through them. An A and R, our Form A plan, was $100 and has been changed to 250 plus $100 per buildable lot. A preliminary plan, 500 plus $30 per lot to 600 plus $50 per lot. Preliminary plan modification, $200 plus $50 per affected lot, new lot or drainage structure, to 600 plus 50 per affected lot, new lot or drainage structure. Definitive plan, 1,000 plus 30 per lot or $60 per lot with no preliminary plan, to $2,000 plus 100 per lot or $200 per lot with no preliminary plan. Definitive plan modification was 500 plus $100 per affected lot, new lot, road change or drainage structure change, to 2,000 plus $100 per lot or $200 per lot with no preliminary plan. Lot release was 200 per lot, now it's 250 per lot. Road inspections for reduced, for reduction in surety was $300 minimum plus 50 cents per linear foot, linear foot to be inspected over 600 feet. That's
Elimination.
No, it's, it's under reduction in surety.
Okay.
It's what?
It's under reduction in surety request.
Okay, $300.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. It's out of order. All right, review as-built plans. That's gone from Karen, where is that?
It's not included because we, because that's done under engineering peer review now.
Okay, all right.
And so I didn't, I don't think it's really fair to charge a fee for that.
All right.
If the board does, then we'll add it back in.
Okay, all right. Special permits, PDD, that's gone. And special permit PDD, that's gone too. Now we have a special permit Village Center and Neighborhood, VCN, that's 1,000. Special permits except to VCN is 750. A special permit modification has gone from 500 to $750. Site plan administrative review is now $500. Site plan waiver is, has gone from 100 to 250. Major site plan is 750. We just did the reduction in surety. The scenic road hearing is $350 and a stormwater permit is $200. Engineer, no, engineering peer review fees are not included in the above fee schedules. All right, is there comment from the board?
You know, I, I will bow to superior knowledge on this one as Karen has done the research on it and thinks this is reasonable set of numbers for 2021 as opposed to 2003. It seems eminently reasonable.
Anyone else?
Yeah, and can we tell the public where this money goes? I guess, you know?
It goes, we have a revolving fund that the money goes into and is expended for the work that goes into these projects.
Thank you. I just want people to know that, yeah.
Right.
The fees go into the revolving fund, the guarantee fund, that the fees don't go into, that's expended for the projects.
We, just so the public knows, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, is there anyone? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone online?
If you'd like to make any comments, hold on one second. If you'd like to make any comments from the public and you're participating online, if you're on your computer, please go to the bottom of your screen where it says participants. You will then be able to click on the right-hand side under the participants list to raise your hand. If you're on by phone and would like to participate, please press star nine to raise your hand. And we will start Q and A now if anyone has any questions. I don't see any questions as such for the, for this.
Okay, all right. I move to approve the proposed Planning Board fee schedule effective March 1st, 2021. A and R, our Form A plan, buildable lot, $250 plus 100 per buildable lot. Preliminary plan, $600 plus $50 per lot. Preliminary plan modification, $600 plus $50 per affected lot, new lot or drainage structure. Definitive plan, $2,000 plus $100 per lot or $200 per lot with no preliminary plan. Definitive plan modification, $2,000 plus $100 per lot or $200 per lot with no preliminary plan. Lot release, 250 per lot. Special permit, Village Center and Neighborhood, VCN, $1,000. Special permits except VCN, $750. Special permit modification, $750. Site plan waiver, $250. And site plan administrative review, $500. Major site plan review, $750. Reduction in surety request, $300. Scenic road hearing, $350. Stormwater permit, $200. Note, the engineering peer review fees are not included in the above fee schedule. Engineering review fees, Mass General Law, Chapter 44, 53G. The Planning Board hereby provides pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 41, 81Q and Chapter 44, 53G, that the applicant shall pay reasonable fees for the employment of outside consultants to provide the Planning Board with technical and legal assistance and that applicants shall pay such fees in advance into a special review fee account or series of accounts to be established by Town Treasurer Collector. All definitive plan, sub, special permit, site plan review and stormwater permits are subject to peer review. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you so much. Okay. 6:45, a discussion vote, Dear Common Surety Release. Karen?
The applicant has requested that the surety for the project being released as the subdivision is completed and our consulting engineer agrees with this, that the subdivision is complete. I did have an email late today that the DVW has requested that the road be swept in the spring as a condition of any surety release as they drove down today. And there's quite a bit of sand on the road.
Okay.
Of this, all the, we have all the documents, we have the ads billed, we have the Conservation Commission certificate of completion, we have all the sign-offs from the Board of Health, we have the easements and we, everything we have for the completion of subdivision. And I, so I would recommend return of the surety. The Street Acceptance Committee voted the other night to recommend street acceptance subject to the Planning Board, you know, release of the surety and the Planning Board's approval.
All right, discussion? Patty, you were on that committee?
We, we, it's gone from us to the advisory and Board of Selectmen. We said that we were okay to have it moved into a public street acceptance.
Okay. All right, any other Planning Board member? Okay, is there anyone from Dear Common?
This is Terry Tedeschi speaking. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
So I'm online here with Mark McSherry and Greg Tansey, who is our engineer and Gene Blanchard, our attorney. And we're here to answer any questions that come up, but I think Karen and Patricia recapped it accurately that I think we're finished and we hope to go to the town meeting for street acceptance and we're prepared to receive surety if that is the decision.
Okay, are you prepared to sweep the street?
Yes.
Okay, and when do you plan to do that?
When it's appropriate. I know the street was very clean this fall when we did our final walkthrough with everybody, but we have had a difficult winter, so I'm sure there's been sand put on the roadways this last couple of months, so you know, when appropriate, but my guess would be around May.
Okay.
Well, what if I get back, what if I confirm with DPW when they would like to, for you to do it in the springtime and I'll get back to you tomorrow? I mean, I didn't have a chance to follow up on the email as I got it at about quarter or five tonight, so.
Yeah, no, yeah, no problem. You can keep in touch with us and we'll, we'll sweep it when appropriate.
Okay, great.
All right, are there any other comments? All right. Move to accept Dear Common to LLC's request to reduce the amount of surety being held by the Planning Board for completion of the Dear Common subdivision in the amount of $65,000 plus accumulated interest as the subdivision has been completed and the reduction is consistent with the engineer's recommendation. The DPW has requested the road be swept in the spring as a condition of surety release. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, good luck, people.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, it's 6:50. This does, we can take this out as it comes along.
It's not, it's not a public hearing.
Okay, we can. All right, we have a Form A, A and R for 33 Common Street. Applicant owner, Joseph West and Jennifer McGilvery. Okay. Karen?
I think you should let the applicant, the applicant's engineer make the presentation.
Greg is, Greg Morris is the applicant's engineer. Greg, if you'd like to begin your presentation to the board, that'd be fine.
Great, thank you. For the record, this is Gregory Morris, Registered Engineer, Morris Engineering. I'm representing the property owner, Joseph West and Jennifer McGilvery. This is an approval not required A and R subdivision plan for their property located at 33 Common Street. 33 Common Street is a 1.6 acre property. It's located in the R2 zoning district, has an existing home on it. The A and R plan is being proposed to cut off an unbuildable parcel at the rear of the property, shown on the plan as parcel A. That unbuildable parcel would be conveyed to the neighbor to the north, O'Brien. We provided a copy of the purchase and sale agreement showing that it would be conveyed and combined with the O'Brien property. Lot one would remain as the existing house, lot one. There would be no change in the frontage on Common Street. It's left with 38,345 square feet of land area, of which 20,262 square feet is upland land area. It meets the zoning requirements. And we believe it's entitled to endorsement. There's no change in frontage.
Okay. Comments? Karen?
The plan is entitled to plan endorsement. So I would recommend that the board endorse it and put this planning board endorsement stamp on it that is not a determination to conformance with zoning regulations.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Okay. I move to endorse as approval not required a plan of land showing a division of 33 Common Street, assessors parcel 49-1-12, Situate, Mass, stamped by Douglas L. Alberg, PLS of Morris Engineering Company, Inc., for applicant owner Joseph West and Jennifer McGilvery dated February 9, 2021. As the division of the tract of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because it shows a proposed conveyance or change in lot line, which does not alter the existing frontage as required on the Situate zoning bylaw with the board's stamp added that planning board endorsement of this plan is not a determination as to conformance with zoning regulations. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, next we have a Form A at 168 Border Street. Applicant owner is Richard and Stephanie Butler. And who is making this presentation?
I think, Mr. White, are you making the presentation this evening?
Sure, I can, I can make the presentation.
Or is Mr. Butler making the presentation? Or are you both?
I, I think we, I think we can partner on it. Sorry, we're, we're not as professional as.
That's quite all right. I just want to make sure I unmute the right people here.
Yep. So.
Okay, so, so both Mr. White and Mr. Butler are both on the line. They're a buddy in share. They're doing the project together.
That's fine. All right, Mr. White?
Yes, we would like to move a portion of Rick's lot over to mine. I don't think it changes the frontage from the discussions we've had with the surveyor we worked with, who is Michael Clancy at CNG Survey Company and Karen. I think there's ample upland on both properties. So we are, we are applying to get approved for that transaction.
Okay. Karen, any further comment?
No, they're just, they're dividing off a parcel in the back and attaching it from 168 to 158.
Okay. Discussion from the board?
Pretty straightforward.
Yep, it is. All right, I move to endorse as approval not required a plan of land in the town of Situate, Mass, 168 Border Street, stamped by Michael P. Clancy, PLS of CNG Survey Company for applicant slash owner Richard H. and Stephanie M. Butler dated January 26, 2021. As the division of the tract of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required by the Situate zoning bylaw on the public way of Border Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Yes, yes. Actually, the motion's not correct, sorry. The motion should say as the division of the tract of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because it shows a proposed conveyance or change in lot line, which does not alter the existing frontage as required under the Situate zoning bylaw with the board's stamp added that planning board endorsement of this plan is not a determination as to conformance with zoning regulations.
Okay.
That's, that's what they checked on the application.
Okay, well then I'll have a second as amended?
Yes, second as amended.
All those in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Okay.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you. All right, we have a continued public hearing, zoning articles at 7:15, which is 20 minutes from now. So what can we do between now and then? Let's see, Karen? Could we endorse 14 to 16 Old Country Way?
Yeah, it doesn't require a public hearing.
Okay, all right. Do you want to, are we all set with that as it should be?
Yes, I reviewed the plans according to, I, I have the MyLars here in the office and I compared the MyLars to the plans that you approved and the MyLars reflect exactly what's approved, except they did add the conditions which you require and they added all the proper registered boxes, which resulted in having to move around a few things of the plan. But all the information is intact, is there, so I would recommend endorsement.
Okay, comments from the board? Okay. I move that the Planning Board endorse the mixed-use special permit plans, 14 to 16 Old Country Way, Situate, Massachusetts, prepared by Ross Engineering Company, Inc., dated April 24, 2019, with revisions through 11/9/20 and conditions, conditions needed for endorsement for 14 to 16 Old Country Way, LLC, Robert Proctor, management, manager. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
All right. Let's see.
Do you want to do minutes and counting?
Yep.
Okay, I move to approve the meeting minutes for February 11, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert? Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
How about accounting?
I move to approve requisition of $8.31 to WB Mason for office supplies, for $5,239 to Harriman Associates for the consultation on the master plan, for $65,501.45 to Dear Common to LLC for the final surety reduction, for $45.62 to Gatehouse Media for the annual subscription of the Citra Mariner, for $5,750.89 to Gregory Sears for the refund of the bond and the unexpected funds for 92 Neilgate Street.
Is there a sec? All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor. You could move to liaison reports and.
Okay, does anybody have anything in terms of liaison reports?
I went to traffic study, we put, we moved Dear Common to a public street, that's about it.
I went to traffic rules and regulations and there's, there have been concerns about people going the wrong way up on Third Cliff. So they're going to do some, look into that, one-way signs. They don't want to put too many signs up there because then it gets too crazy. And someone was concerned about the crosswalk by dribbles to Mountain Bank that people coming around that curve can't see. And the first, the best solution or the one that they're going to try first is to remove a shrub or to trim it back so that it improves sight distance. So that's, that was it. Okay. Let's see. Nothing else to report that I know of?
Are we being invited to the opening of the Senior Center?
I have no clue.
Okay, just wondering.
Are you going if you were?
No.
Oh, okay.
I can't leave my house. I cannot leave my house.
I think it's going to be sometime in the summer or fall.
Oh. All right. Oh, okay, because of COVID, because they're wrapping up now, aren't they?
Yes, they figure sort of a the people, the worker bees will be moving in in March.
Oh, okay.
I mean, Karen Canfield, do you know anything about this? Are you with us, Karen? She's muted. Yeah. Hi Karen. Unmute yourself. Okay. She's trying.
There we go.
There we go. All right, what can you tell us about the Senior Center?
I'm just a near guest here, so.
I'm just a near guest here, so. I'm sorry, so the question is, I have not heard about the official opening, we are constrained, obviously, about gatherings until further notice, so, um, honestly, it hasn't even been decided.
Okay.
But you will certainly all be invited. Hopefully, it'll be nice, and we can be out on the front lawn and, and all of that, but it, nothing has been decided yet.
Okay, great.
Um, and the schedule still shows work going on through about 3:15.
Okay.
And then they know they need to come to us as substantial completion, as you previously requested.
Okay.
I think timing-wise, from a, from a public event sort of thing, is, it'll be fine, like, it'll be nice weather, it'll be further into vaccinations, I think it could work out, but it hasn't, it has not been organized yet.
All right, Karen, while we have you here, has, haha, since you're here, have you heard anything more about, um, Situate obtaining more vaccinations?
Uh, so, yeah, no, the, I have spent a, a great deal of my time for the last two days on that subject, so, uh, there's a twofold problem, one is, there's just not enough vaccines. So the governor has decided he's going to regionalize it and sort of, focus the resources, um, in, in certain places. The hope is, when the Johnson &amp; Johnson approval comes out, that there will be a flood of more vaccines, and they can reopen it up to municipal distribution. That's what we're hoping for, but it is all very much in flux at this point, because we don't have that vaccine, and the current supply does not meet the demand.
Okay, all right.
So I, I do know that our, our, our state legislators are, that, you know, that's all they're doing right now, is trying to sort that out, so that we can get folks down here vaccinated.
Hi Karen, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any other questions they'd like to talk to our liaison about?
In my kitchen?
Oh, you mean, you're not in New Hampshire?
In my kitchen.
In your kitchen? Okay. Okay.
I would like, Ben, I just want you to, to see, do you recognize this above my head? Wait, wait, let's see.
What am I, a kid?
Um.
That was created by your mother.
Oh.
Artwork by Mrs. Bornstein.
I'll pass it on, I'll pass on the be very thrilled that's hanging up.
Any questions?
All right, Karen, thank you so much.
For your, your, uh, public meeting, right? Good. Thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, Karen, would you like to do our planning and development report, please?
Yes, um, so as far as I know, town meeting is still planned for April 12th. I'm sure we'll hear more as we go along about where, about where it'll be taking place. The side at Situate is still ongoing, they are working like gangbusters down there. I think we have approximately 65 occupancy permits issued. Curso Estates is, uh, ongoing. Not without any headaches. The master plan, um, they're working on, Emily is working on getting all the comments addressed, and we're trying to find out some, um, some information that she requested. And we continue to process A and Rs, you know, stormwater permits, et cetera. I, I think the planning board is going to have to decide. We, we allotted a certain degree of leniency on compliance with the, um, with the, with, uh, just subdivision rules and regulations, particularly with Form A plans, as it co- as it's, um, comes to wetlands. The the subdivision regulations require boundaries, if any, of any areas, which the Conservation Commission has determined to be subject to 131 Section 40, and the Town Situate Wetlands Protection Bylaw, these areas shall be determined through approval and shown on the plan. Quite a few of the applications that are coming forward, um, and that have come forward in the past, do not have these wetlands, um, approved by the Conservation Commission. It hasn't generally been a problem on a lot of them, as there's, um, the buffer between the, the amount of upland and wetland, is more than sufficient to meet the required lot area. Of course, the planning board, um, always has to stamp the plan, not, um, we can't determine zoning, so if they created a problem, it would be their own, their own problem. We, we just like to advise people that they potentially getting himself into a bad situation. So I, I think we have to make a determination of how strict we want to be with this, because I'm going to tell you, it was a nightmare dealing with 33 Common Street, with only 262 square feet of upland spare. I, I hope most of you saw the wet, um, the emails that I sent this afternoon. That line still has to be determined, I mean, through the Conservation Commission, but it, um, you saw the reports and said that the line seemed to be, you know, okay, but, I, I mean, what does the board think about this?
Steve?
Well, I, I think we, we need a definitive decision on the, uh, on the wetlands delineation. So, I mean, are you, are you suggesting we approve it without that, uh, determination? Karen?
Uh, you, that's what you did tonight, you approved it without the wetlands determination. You approved, you've approved a bunch of them without a final wetlands, um, determination, and, um, I, I'm asking if I should be, if you want me to be more diligent and say, no, we're not going to accept these without the wetlands being definitively approved by the Conservation Commission.
What's the, um, how often is this the case, where we run into this?
Well, both A and Rs tonight, um, did not have the wetlands approved by the Conservation Commission. Now, I see a difference in the second one, which had considerably more upland than is required in the zoning district.
Yeah.
And so, we've been letting some of them, we've been letting a lot of them go, when they have, can, we've never been as close as we were tonight on 33 Common Street.
Interesting, well, it's, um, and, and it's not something we can hold the final document until we get delineation?
No, because you only have 21 days in which to hear an A and R, and make a determination, otherwise it's approved. So theoretically, they should be going to Conservation and getting all this done before they even file the A and R with the planning board, and, um, it, it's not happening.
Well, if it's not, if these things aren't happening, then we're going to have to take a stronger position in it, right? I mean, are you saying that even after the approvals, these delineations aren't happening?
Um, I don't think all of them are happening if they're, unless there's work being done. Some of them are being done just to transfer a piece of land, and no work is proposed. So, I, I don't know in actuality, you know, what work is being proposed on all these sites. Some of them, they've already had work done, and they come to the, and get the A and R after the fact, too. You've seen that before. So it's a it's an assortment of issues, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, where, um, I just wanted to bring it to your attention to get your thoughts.
Well, uh, let me ask you this question, um, at the end of the day, if we approve them without the delineation, then there, there needs to be some kind of follow-up that says that ultimately that delineation has happened? And that falls to you? Is that right?
No, Ben, there's no follow-up, and there doesn't necessarily, you've already determined that there's access and frontage, which is really what a Form A does, it determines that it's not a subdivision. But as, as I said, you know, we technically don't determine conformance with zoning.
So Karen, are you saying that we're making non-conforming lots more non-conforming?
Well, that was the potential for tonight, for the one today, if anything changed in that wetland line. And that, that was already a non-conforming lot, and it had the potential to become more non-conforming, and it was a very small margin of error, most of the lots that you see have much more margin of error, and I'm not concerned about the majority of them.
Okay.
I just, I wanted to bring it to your attention, so that everybody's aware, I mean, we have these subdivision rules and regulations, and, you know, they're not 100% being followed.
Okay. All right. If you have any further thoughts on this, would you individually please comment to Karen? Okay? All right, so, Steve?
One, one other question, Karen, I just want to be clear on this, I mean, they have, if they have frontage and the proper, um, lot size, if you will, how does the, how does the delineation of the wetlands impact the requirements of an A and R, basically? In other words, i- is it technically that the wetlands need to be delineated so that we can determine whether the lot, uh, doesn't need an A and R? Or, or needs an A and R?
The wetlands are supposed to be delineated, because they are supposed to be showing here the calculation of the upland and wetland area expressed in square feet. So that theoretically, you have the, um, you know that it conforms to zoning, but it's, you know, you can't, um, you can't deny it if it doesn't conform to zoning.
Right, it's, I mean, basically, I think, Steve, to your point, as long as they have frontage, and as long as they have lot size, it is, and
If it doesn't conform, then it's not buildable, right?
And that's up
They can't divide it.
Right, and so, then that would be up to the building department to as, to ascertain.
For a site plan review.
Right, yeah.
Done, right?
So, all right, that's good food for thought. We now have a public hearing, it's at 7:15. Continue, uh, for a zoning article to amend Section 754 Fair Housing and Affordability Standards. Karen?
All right, so we, um, town council had asked that this be continued last time, while we tried to, um, process out this housing choice initiative, and see if there would be any implications. I don't believe there are any implications to the fair housing and affordability standards that you, um, currently have for your zoning bylaw, that you're proposing for the zoning bylaw. So that's the only reason we continued it for this time. Last time, you guys all seemed to be supportive of the language that was proposed for the, um, for the warrant.
Okay. All right. Further discussion?
Since it's a continued public hearing, would you like to open it up to the public?
Sure, does anybody?
So if anyone from the public would like to join in or make a comment, can you please raise your hand? You can do that if you're participating by computer, by going to the lower, um, portion of your screen, pressing on the participants, where you will then be able to raise your hand. If you're joining us by phone, you can hit star nine, um, to raise your hand. So we will go into public Q and A at this moment. One second. Uh, Mr. Fenton, I think you're unmuted, and you can start at any time.
Mark Fenton, 25 Crescent Ave, I just wanted to suggest that I also took a look at the materials that came out from the state, and I'm, I'm with Ms. Joseph in that, I don't think anything came out that impacted the ordinance that we're proposing, and I, I still, in the interim, I've actually continued to do a little more work on, on affordable housing stuff, and I do think we're in the right place on this work, so I just wanted to reaffirm that, you know, when you, when you guys had asked me to do a little research on this, um, anything I've seen since our last, your, the last portion of the hearing reaffirms that, that our market is probably well-suited to inclusionary zoning be an effective tool that should not dramatically, or i- in fact, i- at all, reduce housing production, which is sort of one of the biggest concerns about these kinds of bylaws. So I just thought I'd offer that, and, and thank you guys for the continued work on this.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
No, no other questions.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board? All right, I move to close the public hearing for the proposed zoning amendments for Section 754 Fair Housing and Affordability Standards. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Hi.
Ms. Lambert?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis?
Hi.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you. All right, we now have the continued public, uh, hearing, zoning article, amend Village Center and Neighborhood District VCN by adding North Situate VCN and housekeeping. Okay. This was on the advice of town council that we continue it, which we did, and it had to do with the missive we received from the state. And basically, what we did, we have 12 units per acre by right now, and we're just changing it to 15, which will enable us, as time goes by, to hopefully, um, ask for and receive MassWorks grants. So it's, basically, it's a no big deal. Karen, do you want to opine on that, any of that?
Yeah, I mean, it's 12 units, we had it, um, as 12 units per acre by right for the North Situate Village, Outer Village, where multifamily housing is allowed. And so by changing it to 15 units per acre, we would appear to comply with the Housing Choice Initiative. Well, it came out in 2020, the Acts of, uh, 2020, and it's for MBTA communities that are required to have multifamily housing within a half mile of an MBTA station. And if you don't meet this, you're not going to be able to get grants, so, um, I think that I think it makes sense to do it now for, um, for Green Bush. I mean, no, sorry, for North Situate, I don't, I think that we ought to wait until we find out what the actual directives are in the, the legislation, um, that comes down, to find out, to further analyze anything else. So there were three minor changes, and the first one was to go from 12 units by right to 15 units by right, for the multifamily for the North Situate Outer Village. There's a second amendment that has to be made to the, uh, table, um, for the multifamily building, right now, it says 12 units by right, 24 units by special permit in the North Situate Village Center. And, um, technically, the, a multifamily building is not allowed in the North Village center, because you want to see more mixed use go in there. And so that's why we have to change that to not applicable. And then the third change is to amend Table 1 for allowed building types. Table 1 currently says that a multifamily building in North Situate Table 1 currently says that a multifamily building in North Situate Outer Village is by special permit. And that is, we want to change it to by right. We met with Town Council, the TA, and everyone, they opined that it is some, I mean, our legal ad was generic enough that we couldn't do these changes now. Our consultant, Chris from MAPC is on the line as well. And Chris, do you want to add anything?
No, I, I think you, you covered everything. I think, as Ann said, I think it's a, in terms of the actual effect, it's a very minor change. So I, and I think, you know, if you don't do it now, you're just going to have to do it at the next town meeting anyway. So I, I think it makes a lot of sense to, to be ahead of it and just do it since this is on town meeting now. So it is my recommendation to move forward with it as proposed.
Thank you. Okay. Any comments from the board?
Just a, just a question, maybe Karen knows this. Is there, is there implications for as of right in terms of, you know, I, I recognize we're going from 12 to 14 to 15, which increases density, increases sort of the demand on infrastructure? Is there anything that, that the change in designation would, it doesn't obligate us to deliver the infrastructure or anything like that for it? It's just a, it's just a zoning density, correct?
It's just a zoning density. It's just a zoning density for that. Although there are implications as we get into town meeting that this will probably only need a majority vote to pass. And then there are further implications further down the line when somebody comes in to file an actual project that if it's a multifamily housing within a half mile of an MBTA station with at least 10% affordable units for at least 30 years, then that's approvable by right versus special permit. But there's no mandate to, to have the infrastructure present, et cetera.
Right.
But we all know that this
To the extent somebody wanted to develop and didn't have the infrastructure available, then we couldn't, we couldn't sign off on it, right?
That's correct. I mean, but this, this whole North Situate zoning is geared towards getting it, getting a mechanism in place for when sewer comes to North Situate because the board wanted to be proactive in having the zoning that would accommodate different, different
No, I just want to make sure we weren't, the right designation didn't sort of suddenly put the, you know, development in that case in a different class of some kind.
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
It doesn't say that in any of these guidance documents. And they are going to be issuing more guidance in the next year. And I am going to a training session on this, this housing choice this week. So hopefully, if I find out any new information, I'll certainly let you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? Okay, I'll open it up for Q and A.
So if you'd like to make a comment or a question from the public, please raise your hand. You can do so by clicking at the bottom of your screen by participants and then raising your hand or by phone. If you're joining us by phone, you can hit star nine. So we will enter public Q and A. This man. Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for
Please just remember, please identify yourself with your name and address.
Darren Swain, 22 Gannett pasture lane. So just outside of North Situate. Have been kind of on the peripheral for a little while and attended the prior meeting, but didn't participate because of my first time to see an overview actually presented. That's when I listened to, you know, everyone here and Chris. Just from being in the area and hoping that, you know, things do progress is, and I just kind of wanted to get people's take on, there's a lot of zoning changes for the better that are being proposed. And, you know, whether stakeholders that are down there are, you know, interested in or have expressed interest in taking advantage of it and developing or if there has been, you know, that sort of input given back. And then also being cognizant, I guess, of how much commercial that area can really take as well as parking requirements. But I have looked and I think the parking lot that's in the strip mall, which I assume that a lot of this is kind of centered around, I believe it's private, but we do kind of use it as a
All right. Mr. Smith, Mr. Swain. The parking lot in front of the strip mall, all of the parking spaces along Gannett Road belong to the Town of Situate. The parking spaces that abut the building, Ford's building are private. There are several parking spaces over by the canopy that are in fact town-owned.
I saw signs there, so that made me wonder who, if it was
Right. The Town of Situate owns those spaces. The parking lot between the post office and 7-Eleven belongs to Mr. Ford with an easement for Anderson Fuel to traverse it to get to the back of their building for fuel. The MBT, what was the MBT lot, MBTA lot over by the stone building, the WPA building, is owned by the Town of Situate and now has two-hour parking. So basically, the only real way that any of this is going to come to pass is if and when there is ever sewer in North Situate. Yeah. So we, the goal of these zoning changes and housekeeping, et cetera, are to ensure that if it does come, we are not reacting to what we don't want.
Right.
Which can very, very easily happen.
Right.
So we will have everything, not everything, nothing's perfect, but it will all be set up in such a way that developers will be encouraged to do what is in the best interests of the Town of Situate. Not, of course, with theirs, their interests, because it's all about the money, but we have to have these plans in place.
And then I guess my question was, there was one change that was made for the Village Center as far as like mixed use. So they'll still be able to make, add residential units, I assume.
To the second floor, second and third floors. Yes. They can.
I think that's, I look forward to it. I think that's a big thing. That it's available, at least, you know, horizontally down that side. And I guess I could see that working.
Okay, you're on Gannett pasture?
Yes.
Right. And a Mr. Carr who lives over on Water Bell Berry Lane worked very long and hard to bring that sidewalk
Yes.
Up
Use it.
Up on Henry Turner Bailey Road to connect with Gannett pasture.
It gets used a lot, you know, not only by Situate, but by Cohasset residents and families that connect through the easement and also, you know, access the terrain that
Right. It's, it's a good thing.
It's, it's coming together and, you know, the foot track because I think probably increased exponentially since it was put in, in even since we've been here since 2014. It's continued to see more use.
And you will also find that hopefully by 2025, there will be a set of lights at the end of Henry Turner Bailey Road. And there will be a sidewalk that will continue down from Beechwood where the lights are, down from Shaw's onto Henry Turner Bailey Road and meet up with Gannett pasture. So that's coming.
To know. So I'll sign on to more of these, but, you know, I think everyone did homework on this and I saw Chris's presentation. I noticed not a lot of people talked at the last one, so.
Well, these Zoom meetings are difficult.
Wanted to just put that in there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else?
Do we have any other questions or comments from the public? I don't see any.
Okay. All right. I move to amend the table and change the density for a multifamily building from 12 units per acre by right to 15 units per acre by right in the North Situate Village, Outer Village OV found in Table 2, VCN residential density by building type and district in Section 580.4 of the Situate zoning bylaw. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Ms. Durr Pritchard?
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
And Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous all in favor.
I move to amend the table and to change the density for a multifamily building from 12 units by right slash 24 units by special permit to not applicable in the North Situate Village Center found in Table 2, VCN residential density by building type and district in Section 580.4 of the Situate zoning bylaw. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous all in favor.
I move to amend the table and to change Table 1 for allowed building types in the VCN district in Section 580.3 for multifamily building, North Situate Village OV from special permit to by right. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Yeah.
Thank you unanimous all in favor.
I move to close the public hearing for the proposed zoning amendments for North Situate Village Center and Neighborhood District and the VCN housekeeping. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Yep. Aye.
Thank you unanimous all in favor.
Thank you all. And Chris, thank you very much for your diligence, your hard work. We really, really appreciate what you have done. Thank you. And now the goal is to get this through town meeting. So that should be more than interesting. So thank you all. And is there anything else that we need to go over here this evening? I think we've finished our agenda.
I just don't know if Karen finished her planning and development report.
Okay, Karen?
No, I finished that. Basically, in the next week or so, we're going to need people to come in to sign the MyLars for the endorsement. You know, that's not something we can bring around. You'll have to come in. I think there's, I don't know, 12 or so MyLars.
Wow. Okay.
We require them to record everything. So that's, that we would ask you to do.
Okay.
It's right on the calendar right now. Okay.
All right, people. Thank you very much. Good job by all.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous all in favor. We are adjourned.